Hold on one.
We're at 2:30, Mayor.
The meeting for January 10th, 2012 will come to order. Roll call?
The record will reflect that council members Rozansky and Daigle are currently absent.
Do we have any public comments on those items on the closed session agenda? Have any?
Mayor Gardner and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I first wanted to congratulate our new mayor on her selection as mayor.
Thank you.
And also thank the city staff for indicating on this agenda that the public's right to speak for five minutes on closed session agenda items as dictated in your policy A-10. I don't plan to take so long, but I do want to speak both on something I do see on the closed session agenda and something I think I should see there but don't. What I see on the agenda is what appears to be stalled contract negotiations with several employee groups. I'd like to remind you for a second and I time, and I believe this is only the second time, that although the Brown Act permits you to communicate with your labor negotiator in closed session, there's nothing I know of in it that requires you to do so. Indeed, assuming that you are acting in the best interest of the city's taxpayers, it would seem intuitive to me that if you allowed the public to hear this give and take between yourselves and the negotiator and what he is hearing back from the employee groups, you would have a strong majority of the city's residents on your side, and that would bring the negotiations to a quicker and more satisfactory solution. As it is based on the memorandum of understanding extensions that I see before you on your agenda tonight, it looks like at least some of the employee groups have convinced you that in the absence of an agreement to the contrary, they have a birthright for taxpayers to pick up the full cost of their pensions with no salary deduction at all. That seems to me to be a very strange bargaining position for the city to have gotten into, and I at least am at a loss what happened to their obligation to set aside 9% of their salary towards their retirement. The taxpayers have a finite amount of money, and it seems to me that if the employees are unwilling to set aside anything towards their retirement, then you have an obligation, or we, to lower their salaries so the city can do the saving for them. What especially bothers me is that if you choose, as you are, this option of instructing and hearing from your negotiator in a closed session, I believe there's an obscure passage in the Brown Act that actually prohibits you from announcing the resulting agreement until you have fully committed to it and the other side has signed it. That certainly deprives the public of any meaningful input on this matter, which of course is one of the hot-button issues of the day, and the input of the public might be helpful to leading to a better result. What I don't see on the closed session agenda is any indication of any instruction by this council to anyone regarding the 25- or 30-year-old court case that resulted in the airport settlement agreement. Each and every one of you has said that the future of the airport is one of the paramount issues before the city. But since the city council can take no action without public notice, I have to conclude at the present time either no talks are planned between now and your next meeting, or for some reason you have no desire to provide guidance to your negotiators, whoever they may be. So, thank you. The passage in the Brown Act, by the way, is Section 5495, 7.1, A-6. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll reconvene the meeting of, what day is it, January 10th, 2012? Is there a closed session report?
We have no closed session report this evening.
All right, if you'd all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilwoman Daigle, and remain standing for the invocation from Mr. Frank Carpenter.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please bow your heads and join the meeting invocation? Dear Lord, we thank you for this fair city where we have the good fortune to live and work for its beauty, its resources, and its people. We thank you for these diligent civic leaders and ask that you would give them wisdom and make them sensitive representatives and good stewards of all that has been entrusted to them. We thank you for these caring citizens who have come here to participate. May their voices be heard, and may we be courteous and respectful of one another even when we disagree. We thank you for this great nation where we have the privilege to gather and govern as we choose. May your blessing be upon us as a people, as a city, and as we conduct business here tonight. Amen.
All right, we have two presentations tonight. The first one is the presentation of a Heroic Act Award to Alex Davis.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Ralph Restadis, Acting Fire Chief for the Newport Beach Fire Department. It's my pleasure to be up here tonight to talk to you about one of the greatest programs in the city of Newport Beach, and that's our Junior Lifeguard Program. It's known throughout the world, and many departments throughout the United States model theirselves after our successful program. Every year, we have about 1,250 kids sign up for an eight-week program in which they learn about ocean safety and awareness while having a good time doing it. Tonight, it's my pleasure to recognize two of our lifeguard, junior lifeguards. One will be for Junior Lifeguard of the Year, and the second one will be for our 12-year-old junior lifeguard and his heroic act of saving a life. But first, I'd like to introduce Rob Williams, our Assistant Chief, who will be giving those presentations.
Thank you, Chief, Mayor, City Council. I'd also have my staff up here of Lifeguard Battalion Chief Brent Jacobson and Mike Calfied, Captain Mike Calfied. It's my honor to present these two awards to these young individuals that represent Newport Beach in the Junior Lifeguard Program so tremendously. First one I'd like to call up is Alex Davis. Alex has received an award from our national organization, the United States Lifesaving Association, and I'll just read the certificate what it says. While attending the beach with his mother on August 16th, 2011, Alex Davis, an 11-year-old Newport Beach junior lifeguard, observed six-year-old Chad Wadsworth attempting a skimboard between lifeguard towers P and L. Suddenly, Chad was struck by a large backwash, which caused him to fall in the shore break, whereupon he was immediately swept into the impact zone. At this time, the surf was breaking approximately six feet due to strong south swell. Alex, without regard to zone safety and without rescue equipment, responded to Chad, wrapped his arms around his chest, and took him under the incoming waves and assisted him into shallow water, where another citizen was able to assist Alex in getting Chad onto the beach. Chad suffered no ill effects from the incidents. For his timely lifesaving actions and for placing his life in jeopardy to rescue another swimmer, the United States Lifesaving Association hereby presents this heroic act to Alex Davis.
The city also has a proclamation. However, it says exactly the same thing, so I won't read it, but I will present it.
The next introducer I'd like to call up is Stephen McMillan. Stephen McMillan is a nine-year-old junior lifeguard from the D Division, which is the youngest of our four junior lifeguard divisions. Stephen's nickname is Happy, and he is an exceptional junior lifeguard who truly represents the program's three primary values, or the three Rs of junior lifeguards that are participating and known to them. Always be respectful of yourself and others, and be responsible in all you do, because as junior lifeguard, you are a representative of the city Newport Beach Lifeguard Division. Stephen not only embodies these qualities but encourages his peers to do the same. He is always offering words of encouragement to fellow lifeguards, and on two occasions, his sportsmanship really stood out. On the first day of competition, after completing the event amongst the top finishers, Stephen returned to the finish line where he rallied the entire D Division to cheer for his competitors that had not finished. This became the norm at every competition. At the Greylundy Ironman, which is a six-mile run and approximately a three-quarter mile swim, one of the program's most vigorous competitions, Stephen had an opportunity to challenge to be one of the top finishers in the D Division. But instead, Stephen elected to run with another D competitor who was nervous and not sure if he could finish the event. With Stephen's encouragement, the two boys crossed the finish line together. For this and much more, we are awarding Stephen the 2011 Newport Beach Junior Lifeguard of the Year. This is also recognized by the California Surf Lifesaving Association, and he's receiving a $200 scholarship from them, too.
And again, we have a proclamation from the city, but again, it says the same thing. All right, Madam Clerk?
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on our future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Thank you. Councilman Hill?
None, thank you.
Councilman Rozansky?
Yes, I do have one. Just recently, I was, we were all informed, at least in the city council, that the last of our marijuana clinics had closed in town, or was closed by the city. And so my question is, or something that I'd like brought back to council for report by the city attorney's office, is what steps can we take to, since we are marijuana clinic-free now, that in the event that there are additional clinics opened in town, you know, there's a lot of expense associated with these clinics as far as enforcement and potential litigation to close them, to make sure that not only can we go after the operators, but also the landlords that are renting to these places in violation of our ordinances? So, I'd like to know what remedies we might have already on the books and what remedies that we might enact in the future.
Thank you, Councilmember Rozansky. We'd be happy to come back and provide you with an update regarding the enforcement remedies that are available to the city.
Thank you.
Councilman Curry?
Two things. This last weekend, we saw the opening of a new restaurant in Newport Beach, the Pita Jungle, which is located at Bison and MacArthur in the old Blockbuster space. The food is great, and so I encourage you to go and check it out, because as you know, restaurants are our number-one sales tax generator in Newport Beach. And then, secondly, as you all know, I am privileged to represent the coastal cities on the Orange County Parks Commission, and my colleagues on the commission have elected me chairman for this year, and I'm very proud of that, that the thing that the commission is going to be tackling is going to be the development of a new county regional park at the old Tustin Marine Base, where the hangars are. And so I think that's going to be a great cultural and recreational resource that people from Newport Beach will enjoy, and I look forward to working with the county to make that a reality.
Councilwoman Daigle?
Yes, every Saturday, the Upper Bay Friends and Naturalists conduct a tour at 9:00 a.m., and so you can meet them at East Bluff in Back Bay Drive, a location called Vista Point. And it's really exciting this time of year in the Back Bay. There's extensive migrations of birds going on along the Pacific Flyway, and where Back Bay is a big stop in the migration pattern, so there's just scores of birds, a great diversity of species as well. So I welcome everyone to participate in those tours and enjoy the restoration that's gone on back there.
Councilman Hen?
Thank you. I was very pleased to be able to participate in the, in two promotional ceremonies here for the city. The first for the fire department, a badge-pinning ceremony on December the 14th, and then for the police department, a promotional ceremony. It's just great to see these, especially the badge-pinning ceremony for the fire department. That's a big threshold for a fireman to cross, and it's really great to see that, and to be able to recognize promotion from within, within our safety departments here. And then, we do have a few meetings coming up. We've got a Neighborhood Revitalization Committee meeting on January the 12th at 4:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. We've got a Balboa Village Citizens Advisory Panel meeting on January the 17th at 4:00 p.m., and that's at the Nautical Museum. And we've got a tidlance committee meeting on Wednesday, the 18th, at 4:00 p.m., and that's at Oasis. Those are all important meetings where we're recognizing agendas here for the long-term planning of our city. That's all I had.
Mr. Councilmember Selig?
I have no announcements this evening.
I have three. The first is every year, the council meets to set priorities for the coming year, and usually we've done it on Saturday, but we're making a change, and this year it will be in the evening. It'll be Monday, January 23rd, at the Friends Room of the library at 6:00 p.m. If you're coming, you might want to bring a cushion. Those seats are very hard. Also, an announcement of a free workshop for local businesses. The city is teaming with OPIS Network to offer local business owners free access to expert advice on how they can adapt and grow their businesses. Attendees will learn a 10-point strategy to boost sales and profits. The half-day workshop will be held on Saturday, January 21st, from 8:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Oasis Senior Center in Croix-en-D'Amour. Admission is free, but you need advance reservations, so visit www-help100days.com or call 949-495-6162. And finally, I'd like to ask my fellow council members if they would like, I would like, if they will support me in this, to bring back to the council for another meeting on our agenda, a discussion of whether we should look at our ordinance that concerns chickens. There's been a great deal of discussion, and right now, you're not allowed to have them, but I think it might be good at least to look at it and have that conversation. Is that all right with everyone? Because it will take some staff time to prepare a bit of a report.
There's been a considerable amount of clucking on this issue so far, and so I think we should organize a venue.
We do need a moratorium on chicken jokes. I really do think we do need that. All right, then, we will. So if you are here for that, there will be, staff, what do you think? The next meeting, or do you think a month?
Next meeting's a little tight, but it's certainly within a month.
Okay, so probably a month, but you check the agenda, and at that time, we'll have a full discussion of the issue. And now, the consent calendar.
All matters listed under Consent Calendar, items 1 through 12, are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss the consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor and state their name and item number. If the optional signing card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium, and I'd like to note that there is an amended resolution provided to council and placed in the back of the table for item 3, city council's regular meeting calendar for 2012.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daigle, anything?
Not to be redundant, I think number 12 is going to be polled. Okay, so appreciate that.
Number 12. Councilman Hen?
I don't have anything to pull, but I can't pass the opportunity to once again celebrate what a great success the Rhine Channel project has been, and we've had another basis to celebrate yet this evening with the closing out of that project significantly under budget and significantly ahead of time. I saw Chris Miller out here. Chris, once again, kudos to you and the staff of the city for making this happen in such an effective way.
That brings up a subject. Does staff want to make any comments on that as far as an issue we might want to look at?
Yeah, I think probably in doing so, we would need to pull that, just to discuss that.
And that's number?
That's number six.
Number six. Councilman Selig?
No items to pull.
Councilman Hill?
No items.
Councilman Rozansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilman Curry?
No items.
And I'll pull number 12. Staff, have anything else that they would like to pull?
Yeah, I mentioned number six, that would be it.
Right, okay. Anyone from the public have an item?
My name is Jim Mosher. I'd like to discuss numbers 3, 4, and 8.
All right. Anyone else? I'm seeing none. Do we have a motion?
I would move the adoption of the consent calendar with the exceptions of items 3, 4, 6, 8, and 12.
Second.
You vote?
Prior to reading the vote, I have to read the titles, title for only item number 5 at the moment, Resolution Number 2012-3, a resolution of the city council of the city of Newport Beach, establishing no parking restrictions on designated streets on specific days and times to improve street sweeping effectiveness, and rescinding Resolution Number 2010-111. With that, the motion carries unanimously.
All right. Item number 3, Mr. Mosher.
Mayor Gardner and members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. This item is your annual announcement of your meeting, regular meeting schedule for the year, which I think could be simplified by saying that you hold your regular meetings on the second and fourth Tuesday of every month at 7:00 p.m. As you know, the city charter requires you to read out the text of the resolutions before they're passed, but it gives you the option of waiving the reading of the resolution and having it read only by title. The city charter also requires you to have two meetings every month of the year. It gives you no option to waive that requirement. Since you're not reading the text of the resolution, I wanted to read a couple of paragraphs from it. This resolution begins, the amended one that is in the lobby, recognizing that Section 407 of the city of Newport Beach's city charter directs that the city hold regular meetings at least twice each month. That's basically correct. Charter actually says it's the city council rather than the city has to hold regular meetings. Okay? That is the requirement of the city charter, and there's nothing in the city charter about any option to waive that. And no one can change the charter other than the voters, which you can direct them to do. Second paragraph says, notwithstanding the charter requirement, historically, the months of August and December experienced council and staff member absences and a reduced legislative workload due to the holidays. Thus, the second meeting in August and December is canceled to save city resources and improve overall efficiency. Those words sounded, are new this year. Those haven't been in the resolution in past years. They sounded familiar to me, and they're actually lifted word-for-word out of a letter that was sent to me by the former city attorney dated February 4th explaining his reasons for believing that it was okay to do this. It sounded erroneous to me at the time I first heard it, and it continues to be. I've consulted quite a few calendars, and I haven't discovered what national holiday or a local one falls in the second part of August that is necessitating the city council to take the time off, and I haven't noticed the city council and staff member absences that occur during that part of the year. I actually watched quite closely this year during the second half of August, and I noticed that there were 10 city meetings going on during that time. The only one that was notably not taking place was the city council meeting. In the course of those meetings, I saw all of you, with the exception of Mayor Protem Curry, who I believe was taking advantage of the announced lack of a council meeting to enjoy a cruise in the South Pacific, which is certainly his right to do.
You are a good researcher.
Yes. In fact, on August 23rd, which would have been the date for the second meeting in August, then Mayor Hen was doing invitations on that date, at that hour, in Balboa Village for the first meeting of the Balboa Village Revitalization Cap. And I did stop by the city manager's office. He was present on that day, and the city clerk was here, yet there was no city council meeting on that evening. And going back in past years, before the city council decided that it didn't have to observe the charter requirement in the second half of August, there seems to be no indication of anything unusual about the level or amount of activity at that time of year. of year. There is a famous holiday in the second half of December, but the idea of the city shutting down for that week is a relatively new one. There are various options to remedy this. You, of course, can present to the voters a request to change the charter, to say that you have meetings twice each month except when it's inconvenient to do so. You haven't asked us to do that. There is another option, which is listed in the city charter. Those of you who read to the end of it, or near the end, section 1404, says that the remedy, not only at the ballot box, but there is a legal remedy for making violations of the charter, which you should be aware of before you pass this resolution. It says the violation of any provision of this charter shall be deemed a misdemeanor, which may be prosecuted in the name of the people of the state of California, and is punishable by a fine not exceeding $1,000 and a term in the city jail not exceeding six months or both. Now, I realize that a few meetings back, you allocated some money to renovate the holding cells at the city jail, but I don't think it was with this in mind. So I would recommend, before you pass this resolution, I could consider two amendments to it. First, strike the erroneous second paragraph that seems to give you a right, which you do not have, to waive the second meetings in December and August. And in your list of announced dates, on August, it says for August fourteenth, I assume the second meeting would be August twenty-eighth, add that. And December, adding fourteen to December eleventh, I come up with December twenty-fifth. And the charter says if it falls on a holiday, which it is, the meeting should be on December twenty-sixth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, I've previously taken a look at the analysis of Mr. Hunt and the questions raised by Mr. Mosher, and I agree with the former city attorney, David Hunt's analysis in this area. In essence, holding a second meeting in August and in December when there's a lack of legislative business is basically, results in inefficient business practices, and the Supreme Court's held that, basically, there's no requirement that you do a futile act. If there's no business to be conducted, that basically is a futile act, and the Supreme Court's acknowledged that, the city council, and people do not need to do those type of actions.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on this item?
Mrs. Mayor, member of the city council, my name's Robert Hawkins. Is this public comments, or is this public comments on an agenda item?
This is public comments on this item, number three.
Have we already had public comments in? Have I missed those?
No, no.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
Are there any other public comments on this item? All right, bringing it back to council.
Move the approval of the item.
Second.
Let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the title for resolution number 2012-1, a resolution of the city council of the city of Newport Beach relating to its regular meeting schedule for 2012. With that, the motion carries unanimously.
All right. Item number four, Mr. Mosher.
Mayor Hinn and members of the council, again, Mayor Gardner, excuse me. This will be brief. This item is required annual updating of the list of employees who have to report financial conflicts of interest and the kinds of things that they have to disclose. I asked for this to be pulled for discussion because last summer, there were a couple of articles about conflicts of interest in the Daily Pilot, which implied that disclosures for municipal employees and officials are confined to their financial interests within the city limits. I could find nothing much to corroborate that in the Political Reform Act, which is the basis of these requirements, but I think there may well be such provisions in the labyrinth of state regulations that have grown up around it. My comment has to do with exhibit two, which is at the end of the resolution that you're passing, and I was hoping for the benefit of the public and the employees who have to follow what you're resolving for them to do here, that it could be clarified whether the words here mean what they seem to say. For example, the first section says that the class-one employees are required to disclose all investments and business positions in business entities, sources of income, and interests in real property. I don't see the frequent exemption there for their personal residence. I don't see anything about only interests within Newport Beach. So I am wondering if in enacting this resolution, you're consciously trying to hold the city employees to a higher standard than seems to be the state norm, or this is a case like city council holding two meetings a month, that it doesn't mean what it seems to say? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes. In essence, what we're adopting here is basically the same provisions that are in the government code. We're just adopting it by reference. So the requirements that are in the government code are basically the same as what is being required of our employees, so it'd just be real property interest inside the city of Newport Beach.
All right, thank you. Is there any other comment on this item? Seeing none, I bring it back to council.
Move the item.
Have a second?
Second.
All right, shall we vote?
Prior to stating this vote, the resolution number 2012-2, the title is a resolution of the city council of the city of Newport Beach, adopting an updated designated employees' list for 2012. The motion carries unanimously.
All right. Item number six, Dave?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. I didn't pull this item because of much of the substance of it. I wanted, because there's no other way to communicate with you without violating the Brand Act, about how we memorialize this project, and staff was, I think, very thoughtfully pursuing a, actually, it's a really cool anchor that was dug up from down there, that we'd potentially mount that and put a plaque nearby, and I wanted at least give you the chance to say whether that's a nice gesture, but probably not necessary, or whether there may be some other option, because I, again, this is an opportunity for you to comment on that before we spend time and resources doing that. We always tend to default to make some recognition, but maybe it's less appropriate in this case.
Councilman, Mayor Protam Curry?
Well, I did see, I think, a photograph of the anchor. I think it'd be an excellent piece of public art to be put up and to remind people about how, what it takes to clean the harbor, and the fact that the anchor came out of the harbor as part of the dredging, I think, is also pretty cool.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, especially if we could engrave the council member names on it. So without talking about it too much further, I get the sense there's at least an interest in ratifying that memorial, and we'll continue as is.
All right. Is there any other comment on the item itself?
Yes, I did. Anything else come out of the harbor besides the anchor? My comment, though, is I was really impressed with the enhanced water quality monitoring. One of the characteristics of our city is we just have this massive watershed coming into Newport Beach, and the fact that we work so closely with the Regional Water Quality Control Board is great, so thank you.
All right. Anything else? All right, have a motion?
Move the item. Second.
Vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Item number eight, Mr. Mosher.
Mayor Gardner and members of the city council, this item has to do with a time extension of agreements regarding the amount of their salaries that certain employee groups have to pay towards their pension costs. As I read the staff report, the old agreement lapsed on December thirty-first, which appears to make this a good example of the kind of business the city does have during the second half of December, and what would have normally been approved at your December twenty-seventh meeting in a more timely fashion, but since you did not hold that meeting, city staff had to proceed on faith that you would approve these agreements. Prior to going into your closed session at 2:30 this afternoon, Mayor Protam Curry confirmed that the normal expectation is that city employees pay nine percent of their salary to help pay for their retirement, but the councils, long before this one, agreed to have the taxpayers pay that part. I may have misunderstood the Mayor Protam's comments, but he gave me the impression that if the council acted in bad faith tonight and did nothing, that the employees would default back to the nine percent payment. But I remain confused because that does not seem to be at all what is implied by the staff report or by the extensions that I see here.
Now, let me stop you right there, because that's not correct. They would default to where they pay nothing. It would be the default position. And your characterization of the nine percent, nine percent is what is designated in state law as the employee portion. It's never been paid, though, by the employees here, and in many other jurisdictions as well. And what we're negotiating with our employees is for them to pick that up. That's part of the whole pension debate going on statewide. So what this action does today, our employees previously picked up three and a half percent, and they have agreed in good faith, even though the negotiations have not concluded, to continue to do that. So cynically trying to vote against this or make the case that doing that would cause them to pay nine percent would not be what would be happening, what would happen is they would pay zero.
You can continue, Mr. Mosher.
That is how I thought I read the staff report, because it says the first two agreements, which are with police employee units, says that they're currently paying three and a half percent. They're willing to continue doing that for the next two months, but if no agreement is reached, they actually are demanding a refund of the three and a half percent they will be paying for the next two months, if I am reading that correctly. And the second, or the third agreement here, attachment C, is with the fire employment units, or fire employees' units, who are currently paying three and a half, or five percent, depending on how long they've worked with the city. Actually, if I read it correctly, the longer tenured ones are paying more, five percent, and they are willing to continue paying something, but rather than moving towards the nine percent, if I read the agreement, and this has no time limit on it, they're willing to pay only if they roll back, not towards nine percent, but back to the three and a half percent for all of them. So I just wanted to make it clear that we understand what is happening in this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kiff?
I guess, put this in the category of a little knowledge being a dangerous thing. I think you need to see these in the context of the overall MOUs. As Mayor Protam Curry noted, this is a part of a negotiation process. I give great credit and respect to the safety units that have agreed to continue this contribution. They did not have to do it, and I'm not going to comment further because I think doing so sort of violates the spirit of the Myers-Millie-Sprout Act and our obligation to meet and confer in good faith at the negotiating table instead of here.
Thank you. Is there any other, any other public comment on this item? Councilman Rozansky?
Move the item. Second.
Vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Everything done? Good? All right.
Twelve, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, the one I pulled. All right, that's the bicycle, bicycle committee. What I would like to do, to move things along, is actually to name committee members for this process tonight. Do I have volunteers? Oh, Ed, thank you, and Councilwoman Daigle, thank you both. So that, can we do that? We'll add those names, and that will be the committee so we can begin the process. One thing that the committee asked was, is the council interested in changing the mission, or are you content with the mission of the committee as it stands? It stands, it stands. All right, good. So other than that, that was my only point.
I had a comment, if I may. The reauthorization of a committee in one of the areas it's tasked with is safety. I see our police chief here. And as a pedestrian, as with many of you, you either walk every day, bicycle every day, and one of the safety issues that I see is when you are a pedestrian, you often have to make contact with a motorist, and there seems to be a lot of talking on the phone and texting, and how much enforcement is going on in our city related to that? And I don't know if it'd be appropriate for the police chief to answer that, but if that's something we can look at, is, I mean, it is a state law, and to what extent are we enforcing that on a daily basis?
The bicycle committee does have a segment every month with somebody from the police department, so that will be an opportunity to discuss that at that point. Is there any public comment on this item?
Mayor Gardner and members of the council, had you not yourself pulled this for discussion, I would also, because I noticed also that the members on the application review committee had not been named, and they are now, I also noticed that you are in this motion directing the city clerk to advertise for other people to apply for service on the bicycle committee, but there's nothing in the motion that gives the clerk direction as to how long you want her to advertise the positions for. So I think it would be very useful to add to your motion, whether there is a timeframe, a duration, that's one month, two months, or else a cutoff date for the people to put their applications in. I don't believe there's any general city policy on committee appointments that would give her guidance other than if you give her direction now, so thank you.
Council policy A2 directs us regarding vacancies to any boards, commissions, or committees.
All right, we do have a policy there. All right, thank you. Any other public comment? All right, bringing it back.
Move the approval of the item with the designated members of the committee.
Second.
All right, and now it's time. And Rozansky?
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And now is the time for public comments.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Mayor Gardner, council members, my name is Brian Mason. I am a tenant at the Balboa Yacht Basin, and I've written several letters to each of you, and for those of you that have written, read those letters, I appreciate your time and thank you very much for taking the time. I've also had a conversation with Chris Miller late this afternoon as well. What I want to focus my comments on, because I think there's other people here that can focus on the fairness and is, you know, are we at rack rates, or are we at retail rates in terms of the rates for the harbor? I really want to focus on the actual marina index, and I sent something last night to all of you, and I've got copies here available. In fact, I'll give them to Chris if he wants to distribute. And the couple of items I'd point out on this are, number one, I discovered that there's a mathematical error on the current marina index, and that is, and Chris and I discussed it this afternoon, and I think he's open to correcting it if you so direct. The idea is he took an average of an average, it's a very common statistical error. I've taught statistics before, so it's, you know, not a great sin, but it does change the number slightly. So I would ask council to direct that change. For me particularly, it's about 22 cents a foot. It's about $105 a year that'll cost out of my pocket because of that error, so I would ask that that be corrected. The second issue is the adjustment for the possessory interest tax. As some of you know, every boat in Balboa Yacht Basin pays a possessory interest tax to the county because it's public land leased for private use. Currently, the city has an allowance for one percent for that. That basically really compensates me to about $144 a year. My actual tax, which is attached to the copies, it's the last page, is $340 a year, so I ask that there be an adjustment in that so that at least I'm made whole on the county tax that I'm paying, because other marinas in the city don't pay that. So I would ask that, that change. And then finally, I would ask that the city really consider, rather than pulling these slips into ranges, that by doing so into ten-foot ranges, you're combining forty-foot, forty-five, and forty-six-foot slips into ranges, that that really places a disservice on the lower people in the range. So in essence, as a forty-foot slip holder, I'm paying a premium because I'm being included in and lumped in with forty-five and forty-six-foot slip holders. To me, it translates out to, and I included a page on this in my spreadsheet that I sent, and then it passed out, to me, that's about $100 a month that I'm paying because I'm being lumped in with larger slips.
All right, thank you. Is staff following up on this?
We are, and I, Madam Mayor and council members, I would note that you actually cannot direct us to do something today. This is not on the agenda, but I did send an email to Mr. Mason earlier today about saying that we, Chris and I had talked, and we'd committed to looking at the information that he gave. There are some things that if we've made a mistake, we can correct that. If there's something that involves a change in the resolution setting the rates, which you adopted now... to looking at the information that he gave. There are some things that if we've made a mistake, we can correct that. If there's something that involves a change in the resolution setting the rates, which you adopted now, the latter part of 2010, we would bring that back to you. So we've committed to looking at it with him.
To change that range, it would require an update to the resolution, because it's updated as 10-foot ranges.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other public comment?
I guess I will.
All right, good.
All right, thank you. My name is Michael Rask. I've been, become affectionately known as the Chicken Man. I wanted to take a moment and thank the council and the mayor for reviewing this ordinance, and we look forward to the city's report next month. I encourage you to also go to their Facebook page, shameless plug, The Golden Rod Six, if you need any information as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is John Shalay, and I'm also a vote owner in the Balboa Yacht Basin. I happened to be here last December when you guys decided to sort of increase the rates, to bring it up to more, less, into a level of other marinas. Either I'm very old and very stupid, but I don't think this was the agreement, but I heard, and my colleagues who are in, right now, in, back in there, that the increase is going to be 26 and a half percent from one year to the next. I think what we heard, that the increase is going to be a gradual increase, a dollar fifty or something a foot, not at that kind of rate. If you're looking around in Newport Beach, it's a lot of open and empty slips available. And I can tell you right now, a lot of people are going to leave their marina because the 26 and a half percent increase is totally out of the current economic conditions. I know maybe that, maybe you guys need the money, but on the other hand, I don't think it is intended, at least, this is my understanding when I was sitting here a year ago, exactly in December, whatever date was it, I don't think that was the intention of your people to do this sort of increase at one lump sum. This is the way I seen it. Unfortunately, what it really does is going to create some problems, more and more, to people who love to sail in Newport Beach. I'm a racer, I race all the time, I've been here, I live in Newport Beach for 45 years. So I started here when I was, old guy, much older right now, but at this point, you guys are going to force people out of the area, and there's no place to go in some respect. Some of the boats with the motorboats, they can go, and they're going to go to the back bay when the rate, empty slips are. Sailboats like myself, I can. I'm going to have one choice, quit racing, quit the boat. But again, I don't think it's going to bother you too much, but another fact, that wasn't the agreement, what we heard last year in December. So I don't know what happened between last year December and a day today when the increase went up to 26 and a half percent. I don't think it's right, I don't think in current condition it truly weren't that kind of increase. I understand we have to increase somewhat, but in that, not in that rate. I just cannot understand that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Members of the Newport Beach City Council, my name is Michael O'Connor, and I'm a high school student that lives in Newport Beach. I've come up here today because I'm concerned about the safety of the pedestrians using the crosswalk at Irvine and Margaret in front of Newport Harbor High School, which is, I believe, under the jurisdiction of Newport Mesa School District also. At this, at the crosswalk, there have been several accidents involving pedestrians and vehicles, including one back in October 2007 involving my older sister, when she was crossing at 1:30 in the afternoon during, on the way to a volleyball game in Los Alamos, when she was hit by a car. She still suffers neck and back pains from the incident and has a hard time sleeping. Shortly after my sister was hit, my father contacted the Newport Harbor High School's principal, Mr. Vossen, and begged and pleaded that the school take action before somebody else gets hurt. At the end of last year, a female senior was hit by a drunk driver at the same crosswalk on Irvine and Margaret. Since the city has already placed a stoplight on Irvine Avenue in front of Mariners Elementary, is it possible that the city could also place another stoplight at the crosswalk on Irvine and Margaret, or install some other form of safety lighting similar to what you find on 17th Street near the Pierce Street Annex? I believe you share the same concerns me and my family have regarding the safety of anyone using this crosswalk, and I thank you for all of you listening to me. I hope that you can act on this as quickly as possible before another person is injured or killed. Thank you.
Thank you. I do understand we have a committee that met on that.
Am I all right? We have, we began immediately, actually convening groups of individuals to look at the situation, and that concluded with the gathering of representatives of the student body, the PTA, Public Works, City Manager's Office, City Council, I'm missing one group out of that, police. And we did come to a conclusion, we evaluated over a dozen different alternatives, and we've come up with a immediate, midterm, and long-term steps to take, and those are being addressed at this point in time. And the first thing that we'll see within the next few weeks is a flashing sign that will be appearing there, and that will be followed with additional studies of speed control devices along that roadway. And there will be an ongoing educational program of the students that will be institutionalized so that it happens on a regular annual basis. And within that will be the relocation of bus parking, to eliminate bus parking along Irvine, and moving that over to the 16th Street Parking Lot, and creating much larger drop-off areas, and potentially even eliminating all parking along the east side of Irvine Boulevard during certain hours of school to create more visibility of that walk. So there has been a plan put into place, and it is in the process of being implemented now.
Thank you. A public comment, additional public comment?
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor. Robert Hawkins, I am happy to say I am the president of Speak Up Newport, and on February 3rd, 2012, at the Marriott in Newport Center, Fashion Island, at 6 o'clock, we will have the mayor's dinner. And it's no news to you, Madam Mayor, but it may be news to your audience and family here. Secondly, as you know, I serve on the planning commission.
Why don't you tell them how they can participate in that?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, thank you, Mr. Rosansky. This is Speak Up Newport, you can get their website at speakupnewport.org, and there's a whole host of information regarding the mayor's dinner there, and videos of former mayor dinner, so. As you know, I also sit on the planning commission, and that is not a happy chore. We have had numerous appeals by this council, by various council members, the Ridgeway Projects, both of those did not satisfy the planning commission's thrust, the issues for the planning commission, and yet that's what was said at the council meeting, they did not do that. And we've had numerous other appeals for which, by the council, for which planning commission issues were not addressed. In addition, as you know, I filed an appeal in connection with Pizza Mosa, and that appeal was reviled by many on this council as bad government, or the need to replace planning commissioners. There was no replacement at that time. And then finally, probably the biggest frustration that I have had is I attended the revitalization meetings, and the Neighborhood Community Revitalization Committee. And I pointed out at the early meetings that there were conflicts that were not resolved, and people just kept marching on. My position is that those conflicts infect the entire result of those recommendations, and I am sad to say that I have filed two complaints with the Fair Political Practices Commission, one in connection with Mr. Hen's conflict, the other with Mr. Hill's conflict. I do not believe that the statement in the minutes of the revitalization committee, that there are simply financial interests, complies with the Fair Political Practices Commission. Having done that, I have sworn that I would not represent anyone against the city, and I don't believe that these complaints are against the city, they are against individual council members. But having said that, I cannot serve on the planning commission with the direction of the city and with these conflicts, so I hereby resign. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Mayor Gardner, council members, Denise Oberman. I would like to just comment on the safety issue and the need, along with the Neighborhood Revitalization in the coastal areas, specifically Lido and Balboa Village, relative to a need for a very diligent look at the traffic and parking management issues, which we have a lot of different uses, and the uses are in flux. And I didn't intend to comment on this, but the Michael Connor's comments about the safety around the school really triggered something that I had made staff aware of several years ago, and there hasn't been any further mitigation. It happens that we have an elementary school on Balboa Boulevard at about the 13th and 14th Street block. There are regular, daily, and weekly near misses of people getting hit, including children and even other people of all ages because of inadequate management, understanding probably, but ultimately inadequate management of traffic and parking issues in the immediate school and surrounding residential community. There are two-way streets, there are lack of lights, and it is critical that this be addressed, particularly with trying to encourage commercial activity and the flow through what is inherently a residential community going up and down the Balboa Peninsula, to and from the Balboa Village, and to and from the Lido, that this be addressed. And I'd be more than happy to give, again, specific input to council or staff members, whoever is appropriate, so that the uses that exist and that are anticipated can be properly understood, and we can have an effective traffic and parking management system. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Mayor.
I'm sorry, Councilman Hen?
May I respond for just a moment to that? We have, in fact, addressed the issues around Newport Elementary School. We have taken steps to improve the signage at the intersection of 15th, or 14th Street. We've also improved the, you might have noticed, in-lane markers to draw better attention to that crosswalk, and we have evaluated the possibility of some additional warning signage or lights at 13th Street, and are in discussion with the Newport Mesa United School District, I guess through the personage of the principal at Newport L., about the possibility of sharing the cost of an additional walk guard, walking, crosswalk guard at 13th Street. And we're waiting for a response from them right now with regard to that. So we have done a fair amount of analysis, we have taken some steps to improve, and we're hoping that there will be further steps taken to help with that intersection. This is as a result of an accident that occurred, I'm going to guess, about a year and a half ago now, at 13th Street, and so we'll see. We've had a number of conversations with the school principal there as well about this whole issue, including an analysis of our, by our traffic engineer, Tony Bryant. So we're taking action. I hope that we'll be able to figure out a way to get another crosswalk guard there too.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Good evening, Mayor. Nice to see your face there, and rest of the city council. I've been receiving a lot of emails because I am, oh, thank you. I'm Bettina Deniger, I live in Newport Beach. Thank you, Dave. I've been receiving a lot of emails concerning this, and so I feel, maybe I've put you on notice too, because the state has deemed incarcerated prisoners to be released to the various cities, and of course, Orange County and Newport Beach will be receiving their share, I'm sure. And with the number of rehabilitation houses already saturating our city, many wonder how these convicted felons will be monitored, or how the city will deal with their infiltration of our neighborhoods. Maybe this is a police issue, but I don't know, have you, I would like to know if you have been notified as to how many we will be getting to enjoy our lovely beaches. Has anybody received anything from the state?
Dave?
Madam Mayor and council members, I have briefed the council individually about the impacts of AB 109 through the police chief's recommendations. The police have been very active, working countywide with the district attorney's office and other law enforcement agencies to make sure that we're appropriately ready for any impacts. I don't, frankly, I don't expect people to be assigned here into the rehab homes, given the cost of the rehab homes here, but it's certainly something we're prepared to look at. There is a reporting mechanism through the probation and parole system where we know where they are, where they're assigned, and we'll continue to keep the public updated on that to the extent that we can.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Good evening, Happy New Year. My name is Peggy Ford, I live at 310 Fernando Street. I'm here this evening to represent the food service industry for the city of Newport Beach and invite the community to attend the sixth annual Newport Beach Restaurant Week, taking place January 20th through the 29th of this month. For the first time, the campaign's going to be extended to nine days, and will include two full weekends of bargain gourmet dining at some of Newport Beach's best restaurants. So we encourage you to come and check out NewportBeachDining.com, view the list of the participating restaurants for 2012. Their delicious menus are online, you can kind of see where you want to dine during the week, and check out all the other promotions going on during the campaign. There are some launch events, and on behalf of our Board of Directors, we would like to personally invite the council, as well as Mayor Gardner, to attend our VIP media and gala launch party on the 18th. It's at the Five Crowns Restaurant from 5:00 to 7:00. And would just like to thank the city for their support of Restaurant Week and the restaurant industry as a whole, and we look forward to seeing the community at the sixth annual Newport Beach Restaurant Week. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And any other public comment? All right, seeing none, move on to public hearings, the Lido Village Design Guidelines.
I'm sorry, Mayor, it's time for oral reports from city council.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm just jumping around, I'm trying to get meeting, moving. Councilwoman Daigle?
None.
Councilman Hen?
Yes, a couple of quick things. We had a Neighborhood Revitalization Committee meeting on Thursday, December the 15th, where we heard presentations regarding the design guidelines, actually, essentially, presentations regarding the three agenda items that we're here to deal with tonight. We had a combined meeting of the Balboa Village Citizens Advisory Panel and the Neighborhood Revitalization Committee on Tuesday, December the 20th. This was to hear the report of the Economic Development Consultant and the Parking Consultant, having to do with their initial survey work in those two areas with regard to both Lido Marina Village and Balboa Village. That'll be followed up by additional agenda items. I would like to make a comment regarding the comments of Mr. Hawkins made a little earlier this evening. It should be noted that I have recused myself from the proceedings of the Neighborhood Revitalization Committee as it relates to the Lido Marina Village activities, and so I regard his comments as moot at this point, as it relates to me. And then, I think that's it.
Thank you, Councilman Shalay.
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight.
Councilman Hill?
I would only echo Councilmember Henn's comments. I, too, have recused myself from the West Newport Beach agenda item on the Neighborhood Revitalization Committee, as I own property that is at one end of that project area.
Councilman Zansky?
None, thank you.
Councilman, Mayor Protem Curry?
No items.
And I have none. Okay, now, public hearings, Lido Village design guidelines.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to give some overall introductory comments on the next three agenda items, because this Councilmember Henn already gave a preview on, they are three neighborhood revitalization projects.
We need some recusals, I think.
And I will be stepping out of the meeting for this agenda item.
I would also ask that you actually not make comments on all three, but make comments as appropriate, because I will be recusing myself from the West Newport Beach item, but I will be participating in the Lido item.
My comments are general in nature, and just in terms of how the revitalization process was put in place by the city council. And it was established by three-year priority sessions at the beginning of last year. The city council identified six priority areas for revitalization, and to that end, the city council appointed an ad hoc neighborhood revitalization committee. And in turn, that committee established five citizens advisory panels for, one each for the five priorities that were established for the calendar year of 2011. The CAPS, which is the acronym for the Citizens Advisory Panel, began their work back in summer with the assistance of city staff and with consultants. Three of the CAPS have concluded their review and recommendations and have made them to the ad hoc revitalization committee, who in turn have forwarded those recommendations to you this evening. The first item on your agenda this evening is a public hearing, and it's for consideration of design guidelines for the Lido Village area. Our consultant team is here to give you an overview of the design guidelines, and that would be our team of Tim Collins and Todd Lerner of WHA. And at this moment, I would like to introduce Tim Collins, and he'll begin the presentation.
Thank you, Kim. Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. By way of some further background, the overview of our presentation tonight is the culmination of the Lido Village planning. And this planning started 16 months ago, and I'll give you a little timeline in a moment. I want to review just briefly the history and background of the Lido Village design guidelines, what the purpose of those design guidelines is. I want to really stress the conclusion of the community outreach and the involvement, which was exceptional. Todd will review with you the format and the content of the guidelines, and we will then touch upon the key chapters and the key elements of the document. By way of background, this process began about 16 months ago, when we were charged as a public-private partnership to look at a master planning effort for the Lido Village area. And that was on behalf of three stakeholders, including the city, Vornado Realty Trust, and Villalito Partners. Since September of 2010, the first checkpoint, if you will, was the council's action on January 25th of 2011, not quite a year ago, at which time council did approve one of those concept plans. It is fondly referred to as Plan 5B. It was recognized throughout the initial phase, from September through January of last year, that there needed to be some vehicle, some mechanism, some construct that would allow early implementation, because we knew we had what we deemed entitled later on, the early entitlements. And that is that there are, and there were, certain major property owners who wish to proceed with the redevelopment and improvement of their properties, and they are looking for the context within which they can begin that process. They are asking that there be design guidelines. So we came forth, and council's direction was, let's move to a design guidelines phase and recognize the appropriateness of that specific planning focus. We also realized in the conceptual planning effort that we had one time to get right the connectivity between the various major property owners. We all saw the need for pedestrian connectivity and circulation, and that was to be another one of our underpins for the design guidelines. So in summary, then, it was the adoption of the design for Concept Plan 5B that triggered the next steps for development of design guidelines. A bit of background, then, on the design guidelines themselves. Since we started on January 25th of last year, we really sought out public comment. In summary, we spoke to, heard from, sat with more than 275 discreet residents, many of whom attended multiple meetings or reviewed multiple documents. So it really was a broad-based activity. Probably our greatest single event was an open house that was hosted by Vornado Realty Trust, at which time we presented a very advanced version, a 90% draft of the design guidelines, and we found that there was indeed a consensus support for the document that allowed us to proceed to where we are tonight. Throughout this, we were guided by an outstanding citizen, the CAP Citizens Advisory Panel team, I'll recognize them a little later, because they really went above and beyond. Their duty was extended beyond what they volunteered for, and their work product is reflected in the document. We had a very high volume of public comments, beyond those folks who actually attended a meeting or two or three. There was a lot of response to the media coverage and to our own outreach from our firm, where we mailed to interested parties who said they were having difficulty either attending a meeting or finding out all the information, maybe not as comfortable as they'd like to be with navigating the city's website. So we mailed routinely to about 65 residents to try and keep them in the know, all of whom had an interest in Lido Village. So the collaborative process ends here tonight, as I said, 16-month of process. Let me move now to what the purpose of the design guidelines is. We found in the conceptual planning phase that it was important to start the process with some benchmarks. Next slide, please. I will point out the cornerstones that we agreed upon and that were, again, guided with a lot of staff direction. We had outstanding help from the city staff in framework, so that we could continuously, as we proceeded, step back at each juncture and say, have we met the standard that we set for ourselves? Are we holding to our principles? And those were generally that we wanted to find a basis of unification for Lido Village. We needed to really begin to unfold a visual appeal. Everyone was unanimous about the need for a sense of place for the village. We needed to create, in the document, a flexibility, because we want it to be a document that will survive the test of time for five to 15, 20 years, to allow it to evolve. And lastly, we needed to make sure we began to address sustainability standards in the document. At this point, I'll introduce Todd, who will walk you through the specifics of the format and content. Todd?
Mayor Gardner, council members, thank you very much for this great opportunity. Being a resident of the city of Newport Beach, this has been a pleasure to do, and I couldn't say enough kudos to staff who's really helped us along this. The content and format of the design guidelines was to, as Tim mentioned, really provide a continuing momentum, really create a sense of place. And we broke the design guidelines into a series of sections addressing the overall setting, the individual parcels, we talked about the architecture, the landscape, and then also the implementation. So to begin, we really looked at the design areas. And the reason why we looked at this, because it's a little bit tricky with all the different landowners, all the different architecture, all the different uses in that area, we really didn't want to focus on the building, we really didn't want to focus on the building form or the use, but necessary, more the street interaction. This is per the direction of some of the council members, as well as the CAP members as well, addressing that pedestrian interaction. And then also, what we really wanted to do with these frame, with the guidelines, was to create a framework for moving forward, to address and help move the process to create a sense of place. In Chapter 1, we looked at the, basically the location, the setting, looking at it at a holistic point of view, how it sits within the city of Newport Beach. There was some earlier comments and earlier notes that this was a gateway to Newport Beach. Well, it was actually, a lot of people pointed out, it was a gateway to the peninsula, it's a historic gateway. So we really wanted to reflect the idea of what it is and how the history fell in there. This is an example of a rendering that we drew after the open house, as well as multiple CAP meetings, to talk about how people really wanted to engage pedestrian spaces and open up the storefronts and spill out onto the street. And this is a conceptual rendering, again, drawing inspiration to see what could be the future for the area. Chapter 2 was, again, the overview, but we really looked at each of the dynamic blocks and dynamic areas, looking at the edge conditions, the pedestrian interface, the vehicular interface, as well as the building facades and how they interacted with that. And so what we did is that we looked at each area, not necessarily ownership, on how all those would fit together, and categorized each area on how it would interact. Chapter 3 basically talked about the architecture, and one of the big focuses was, after the open house, really create a sense of place. Originally, we talked about a broad-brushed approach to architecture from a style standpoint. I quoted a year ago Newport Eclectic, and I'm regretting those two little words as every day went by, but we really honed it to two different characters, and that was a direction for the citizens, that they wanted to simplify the area, really make it a simplified approach. And so what we did is that we looked at all the different details and all the different elements that would go in and help define the character of how you establish a sense of place. And we put multiple, I think we pulled over close to 250 to 300 images and put them up on the boards, and people would pick and choose, and put dots on which ones they liked and which ones they didn't like. And so we used this formulaic approach to develop the two architectural styles, which were coastal and Mediterranean. And these are also influenced by the landowners themselves. I want to give kudos to Lee Iverson, who's a local architect who lives on Lido Island, who came to this open house, and he really helped solidify the direction of that by providing additional insight as well. Chapter 4 addresses the landscape architecture, and per direction of city council, this was one of the most dynamic sections of the design guidelines, in that this is going to be the area where the public realm really takes on, or takes the forefront of how we establish a sense of place and leading forward, and that Councilman Selich really addressed that we really wanted to have no additional burden to landowners, and the best way to do that is possibly take it on through the city rights away and through working with staff and working with maintenance, how that could be addressed. And they were very diligent in going through and reviewing the different aspects of the design guidelines, especially plant palette materials, to make it as simple as possible, yet effective enough for a unifying theme. So I'm gonna turn back over to Tim to talk about the implementation strategies with Chapter 5. This is probably one of the most dealt-on sections, even though it's one of the smallest in the design guidelines.
The CAP members in particular were interested in seeing how the design guidelines that might evolve and hopefully be adopted by council would have the weight of law. And we were, again, here guided by staff to go back and look at the statutes that exist today and the form by which these design guidelines could be brought to life and have the weight of enforcement at the appropriate stage. And what has evolved is really a framework, it's an outline, as we will talk about in our recommended action. We think that it's appropriate for council to give staff direction to now go back and flesh out these specifics needed for implementation program, particularly the incentive aspect of what can be done to induce property owners, to induce tenants to make improvements, and help move forward the revitalization of the village. So we see it kind of as a, not just all mandate, not just all prescriptive. On the other hand, we want to generate and encourage voluntary attention and have an overlay of an enforcement structure, so that these guidelines are here, being used and applied in years to come. They are nothing more than a first step in improving the vision. We have talked about in our CAP meetings, we were always frustrated that we tended to want to go off on a tangent now and then, for example, the challenge of parking that has come up tonight in the public comments, and safety. We said, no, that's not appropriate for the design guidelines. On the other hand, the design guidelines in the implementation phase, hopefully, and as other studies are conducted by staff and at the direction of council, we may see them, too, come into the structure of an implementation policy. Tenant mix, investigation of options for the best tenant mix for the village are something that was outside of the purview, but it may help with the implementation. So finally, in closing, suggested next steps, very simply, we would ask council to adopt these design guidelines, and we would ask council to direct staff relative to adopting an owner incentive, or developing and then adopting an owner incentive program. I'd like to close with some special thanks. As I said I would do earlier, to recognize the CAP members, Hugh Helm, Craig Batley, Roberta Buchanan, Bill Dunlap, George Schroeder, and Richard Lures. I don't know if any of them are present, I see one, two. Thank you, gentlemen, lady. And city staff, we really drew upon from time to time, we reached out, and I'm happy to say that we shook hands at some point in this document with the city attorney's office, the Arborist, Engineering, Public Works, Building, Safety and Maintenance, all of whom contributed to a better document. Lastly, for the Neighborhood Revitalization Committee, the guidance given by Mr. Hill, Selich, and Henn. And very big roles were played from time to time. It was my role primarily to herd the cats, and I spent a lot of time with the major owners of Villalito Plaza, Vornado, shop owners, and even some of our neighbors across Newport Boulevard, who came to the table and wanted to be included in the planning area. And lastly, at the risk of being, of overlooking anyone in particular, thanks to Jim Moser, Omatali, Dan Purcell, Denise Oberman, who is here tonight, who was a frequent attendee and contributor. We thank you all, it made the public-private process a good one. Be happy to take any questions.
All right, do we have any questions? Councilman Hill?
I'd just like to make a couple of comments, if I may, Mayor. I would like to reemphasize the team aspect of city staff right through to community in putting this rather herculean task on a schedule and adhering to a schedule and coming up, I think, with some excellent, excellent results. The Community Development Department, Kim and Jim with his team in planning, Public Works, Dave Webb, the other Webb, and the efforts that were made there, I think that, you know, really brought it together. Tim, where'd you go, Tim? Your leadership was supreme through the process, it was a group of cats running in every direction, but you had the ability to bring them together in the end. And Todd, having some experience in architecture, I know that we underpaid you, but we appreciate the work that you did. The results, I think, are very much a working tool, and as part of my comments, I would like to move the adoption of the design guidelines. But then, within that, if I had the support of other council members, I would like to encourage staff to come back to us with a more detailed implementation program. I think that this is a very high-priority project, because it involves the existing City Hall site, which will be vacated in December of this year, and that we need not have an attractive nuisance, or possibly an unattractive nuisance, at the entrance to the peninsula at that point in time. And so I believe that my recommendation- And so I believe that my recommendation of next steps would include, because so much of the importance of this in the aesthetic and the commitment to proceed is with the landscaping as a unifying element, and the majority of that landscaping will take place in the public right-of-way. And so I would like to see us proceed with specific design of that landscaping in the right-of-way. And then the impact that that exercise will have, combined with the new knowledge that we have now of what's proceeding, or the changed information, I guess I should say, of what's proceeding on Lido Plaza, that I think it's also time to update the master plan, to correctly identify what's going on on that front, and to bring forth to the council the final commitment as to what will be happening on the city council site itself.
Is that all, is that all one motion?
No, the motion is only to approve the...
Thank you.
I was going to second that very long motion.
This evening, and to ask staff to come back to us, if I have support of the rest of the council members, that we could look at this in a more detailed implementation manner.
Councilman Selich?
Thank you.
I just wanted to second that motion.
Councilman Daigle?
I have a couple, number of questions. The first is, the comment was made, we want to make these guidelines as much law as possible. Could the City Attorney comment on what exactly it is, you know, what level we're sort of asking to be approved here?
They're not asking this evening for them to have the force of law. They're basically guidelines that will be adopted, potentially in a incentive program in the future. Am I correct?
And that is correct. And there's enabling language in the zoning code that says that the city council can adopt guidelines that are not part of the actual municipal code that are enforceable through the development review process.
So these, they are enforceable, then, design guidelines?
They're guidelines. They're not, they are not development standards that are adopted by ordinance.
So if it says beige, you're supposed to paint beige, which that's sort of surprising, but if you want to paint red, you can?
There is that opportunity, yes, without any type of variance finding.
Sorry, I'm sorry, Councilman Daigle.
No, that's fine. And then, you know, the public notices there's just significant vacancies in this area, and I don't think it's because, you know, there's not enough trees or streetscape. And what is your professional opinion as to why there are these vacancies? What are the constraints and the impediments we have here, and what is being done to address that?
Thank you, Councilmember Daigle. That is a very good question, and these design guidelines, we're, again, looking more at the physical environment within Lido Village. We have also contracted with Kaiser Marston, which is an economic analysis firm, and they are currently undertaking a study of both Balboa Village and Lido Village and the Mariners' Mile area, to give us some recommendations on their observations of what is happening in these areas, and hopefully we'll come away with some very good strategies for implementation to improve the economy.
Okay. And then my final question is, for benefit of the public, where is the city with the reuse concepts of this current property, the reuse of City Hall? Where are we in the process? You know, what's on the table? If you could bring us all up to date, I'd appreciate it.
Well, Councilmember Daigle, the hope is that we could potentially discuss this a little bit more at your planning session on Monday, the 23rd, in that context of what the approach indeed is, because I think the council does need to weigh in more formally on that.
Anything else?
Great. No, I just appreciate the affirmation that these aren't laws, they're simply guidelines. You don't have to paint it beige. You can paint it red, and, you know, Newport's always had a lot of flexibility with that design, and I think people appreciate that.
It would depend upon the shade of red.
Fire engine. Mayor Protem Curry?
Thank you. I'd also like to congratulate our consultants and staff, and also the community members who participated in this. I think it was an excellent process, and I think the final product is one that we could all be very proud of. I just want to confirm a fact, I think it's evident, having read this, but there are two, at least two churches in the area, the Christian Scientists Church and St. James Episcopal Church. I just want to make sure that none of these design guidelines in any way impede the ability of them to continue worship at those locations, or to park their parishioners at appropriate times, that kind of thing.
That is a correct statement.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. My concern is on 5.2 incentive considerations. We talk about reduced permit processing fees, commercial rebate program, low interest-rate loan program. Is that just for this area, or are we talking about a citywide program that we could utilize in different areas? If it's, we're talking about the ability of an area in West Newport to participate, or certain other sections of the city, that's one thing, but if we're saying only this one section gets this special program, then I have some problems with it.
Mayor Gardner, that is a second phase of the design guidelines, and part of the staff's recommendation is that you direct us to come back with some more detail to the implementation plan. But as follow-up to your question, Kaiser Marston, again, is looking at an area, just Lido Village, Balboa Village, and the Mariners' Mile area, for areas for economic improvement or incentives. So it's not just limited to this one particular revitalization area.
Okay. But if you're, I'm fortunate enough to have an old building, say, with an old sign, in another area, you might still be able, we don't know yet, we're not...
We don't know. We're still in process on that.
Okay. As long as we're not locking ourselves into anything. All right. Members of the public, any comments on this item?
Mayor Gardner, councilpeople, Denise Oberman. I also want to express my thanks to the consultants that we've had and the members of the committee and the community. I think they've done a very diligent, thoughtful, and also contributive vision to the guidelines. I think that when it comes to the redevelopment, I also understand there's another economic consultant that's been engaged. I want to encourage the council to understand who the stakeholders are that will make this area economically successful, because I feel that this area, it is a neighborhood, and there are residents that live here on a regular, part-time or full-time basis. This isn't simply a transient area. There's a high per cap on the part of the regular residents, so there's the ability to give traction to and make commercial areas with the right tenant mix economically viable, as well as being attractive destination. So I support that recommendation and encourage you to look at that. Then my last comment is that in between the Lido Village and the Balboa Village, there is a stretch called the Balboa Peninsula, and that stretch houses a lot of those residents that can make a material contribution to the sustainability and the economic vitality of these areas, and their guests and visitors. So there needs to be some consideration to continuity of design and landscape between the Lido Village and the Balboa Village. And right now, that stretch is outside of the scope of any of these target areas. So I wanted to request that that be considered, and in the implementation, there is some attention given to that area, so it can, in fact, be an entire area that's attractive for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Thank you. Robert Hawkins, resident of the city and attorney in town. I want you to take a look at Bullet Point Three. These are special thanks. Mr. Hen's name appears there, and Mr. Hen has recused himself from consideration of these items. Now, it doesn't work. It's like the toothpaste is already out of the tube. Neither Mr. Harp nor anybody else can put the toothpaste back in the tube. Mr. Hen has participated in this process from at the very, very beginning, when we began the study sessions with three landowners, including the city, and Mr. Hen represented the city. First comment. So I believe that the best course of action, and the most appropriate course of action, given the conflicts, complaints that have been filed, is to not take action on this item tonight. Let the Fair Political Practice Commission make determination as to whether or not Mr. Hen has participated improperly. Secondly, we heard about the landscaping plans. Now, the landscaping plan, as near as I can tell, is to relieve the private property owners of the obligation to put landscaping on their property, and we're going to put landscaping in the public right-of-way. That public right-of-way currently is being used by vehicular traffic. Nobody has studied the traffic impacts of that proposal. And let's take a look at some of the findings that you're being asked to make, because, and I'm on the second page of your resolution, this action is not defined as a project, does not require environmental review under SEQA, because it involves general policy and procedures making activities not associated with a project, and does not have the potential for resulting in a direct physical change in the environment, or a reasonably foreseeable indirect physical change in the environment. Well, we've just talked about a direct physical change. We're planning landscaping in the right-of-way. I think you need to do environmental work, I think you need to do traffic work. This area is not uncongested, and you need to comply with the full scope of SEQA, and I don't believe you have. So, once again, you've got a conflict problem here. I believe that undercuts your ability to take this tonight. Now, the Fair Political Practice Commission acts very, very quickly. They will provide Mr. Hen with the complaint within three days. They have 14 days to resolve the issue or begin to study the issue, so the conflict issue can be resolved quickly. And I would encourage you not to take action tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would staff like to comment?
Just briefly, I think it's very important to recognize that it's highly questionable whether or not Mr. Hen even has a conflict or not, but Mr. Hen has recused himself from these proceedings, and I think it would be appropriate for you to go ahead and move forward and take action on this item.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment?
Mayor Gardner and members of council, my name is Jim Moser.
Yes, they left the H out.
Yes. Actually, the first thing, I agree somewhat with former Commissioner Hawkins. It's a little hard to put the milk back in the bottle after it spilled, or toothpaste, whatever. There is a little bit of that issue. Initially, first thing I wanted to bring your attention to was a staff report unrelated to that issue. This is a taxpayer issue. A staff report from June 14th, not this staff report. This is the allocation of funds for the production of this design guidelines, which Mr. Collins and Mr. Lerner worked very hard on and came up with a result, although I somewhat agree with, actually considerably agree with, Councilman Daigle. The final renderings look an awful lot like the wildly unsuccessful Via Oporto that we already have, and I don't think, just, this, I don't think by itself is going to lead to revitalization. What I was going to ask about, though, is how, if the public can be assured of where the funds came from. This report from June of last year said that the total cost of this project was $148,000, and there was a contract here that the city council approved for paying that to the architectural firm, but it says here in the staff report that there would be a separate written agreement that most of that cost would be underwritten by the Lido Village stakeholders, which kind of brings up the same conflict problem again, though. The Fritz Duda Company was to contribute $44,000, the Vornado Company $34,000, the Marshall Development Company $10,000, so that the city taxpayers would be only paying $60,000 towards the total of $148,000. And now, again, as the city manager has mentioned, sometimes too little knowledge is dangerous, but my understanding was there never was a written agreement, so I'm wondering if the taxpayers can be assured that those stakeholders did contribute their part towards this. That's the first part of my comment. And then additionally, other conflict problems that the former planning commissioner mentioned, and that the thing is kind of funded by the people who are the subjects of the design. Then, of course, the CAP members were picked in part by the person who is recused, and they themselves, if they were normal public officials, probably wouldn't have been able to participate, some of them in the decision-making process, because they had interests in the area. So all of those things especially kind of taint the idea of the incentives for this, which, like the mayor, I have a problem with to start with. It's kind of like if you had asked me to make suggestions for remodeling my own house, and then you were going to offer to give me public funds if I actually went through and implemented my own ideas for what I should do. And it just doesn't have a right, quite, feel to the incentive stage. You're not getting to that yet tonight, but when you do that, I would feel uncomfortable with that also. So I think that's pretty much what I... Well, I also thought the presentation was nice, but a little bit deceptive about that Chapter Five and the implementation. I think that went by pretty quickly at the CAP meetings, and there was not a whole lot of public participation in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any response about the comment on the financing?
Yes.
Mayor, please. Just a moment, please. Go ahead.
Mayor Gardner, we do not have any written agreements with the three property owners that were identified in the June staff report. Staff has been in contact with representatives of each one of those entities regarding the payment of the obligation as stated. So it has not been yet resolved, and one of the property owners, one of the properties has changed ownership since June. So we can come back at a subsequent meeting to give an update to the city council, but there are sufficient funds that have been set aside for this contract, so that we were really looking for reimbursement from the three property owners.
Thank you.
Yes, Garrett Hartney. I'm one of the lodge trustees for the Newport Elks here on Pea Portel. And forgive me, I'm new to this particular project going on. They've just recently asked me to start looking into the city's progress with the redevelopment Tonight, as I understand it, the main thing you're doing here is you're adopting this concept which would allow you to establish the traffic corridors and the pedestrian ways and the landscaping. I notice a promenade going in front of our property. Would that, with what we're doing here tonight, would that open the ability for a developer or something to actually apply to develop that promenade around our property, like it shows here in 5B? Is that in play, or is that, what is that?
Mayor Gardner, I'll respond to that question. Concept B is still a concept plan, and as Mr. Kiff indicated, we are looking at alternatives and will be discussed at the planning session in the near term with the full council. But there isn't anything formally adopted for the property, and it's still a conceptual plan.
Okay. Then, let me ask it this way, then. Since it is there, would the city have the right to go ahead and put the promenade in front of our property?
Mayor Gardner, the answer is no.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Any other public comment? All right, I'll bring it back to council. The motion is to approve the Lido Village design guidelines and to ask staff to come back with an implementation plan. Do you all vote, please?
I had one additional comment. I really agree with the mayor on this point about the incentive program, and I don't think you can single out one part of the community and not apply the same considerations to Corona Del Mar, to Newport Center, to other areas, and otherwise, it's just, I mean, it's crony capitalism. And the fact that we have a property owner's representative guiding and managing the public process, I think that needs to be revisited. That's something that I'm uncomfortable with and members of the community are uncomfortable with. We ought to have an individual guiding this that has an arms-length relationship with the property owner, not, has a financial interest in the outcome. So that would be my concern about it. So, that would be my concern about it.
All right. Should we vote?
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the resolution title. Resolution number 2012-4, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, adopting the Lido Village design guidelines with that. With Councilmember Hen recusing himself, the motion carries 6-0.
All right. We'll move on to current business, which is number 14, the West Newport Landscape Revitalization Project.
Madam Mayor, I will be recusing myself from this discussion.
Is Mr. Hen coming back for this?
Yes, he is.
All right. And do we have a presentation on this?
Madam Mayor, I will also be recusing myself as I own two properties within 500 feet of the subject area.
Yes. Madam Mayor, this is the second neighborhood revitalization project on your agenda this evening, and this is a conceptual landscape revitalization effort within the public right-of-way. And we have a presentation that will be given by our consultant, who is Dennis Stone. Dennis?
Thank you, Kim. Mayor Gardner, members of the council, as Kim said, I'm Denny Stone, the consultant, and it's been my good fortune to facilitate three of your neighborhood revitalization CAPs, two of which you're going to hear about tonight. We do have a brief presentation first on West Newport, and then you'll have action, and then we have another short presentation on Santa Ana Heights. Okay, thanks, Jim. Wanted to first start out by describing the committee, and Councilmember Selich was a very active council liaison for our committee. Our committee members, Cindy Kohler, Gina Leslie, Jeff Morris, Tony Petros, and Paul Watkins, were all very actively involved. I didn't see any of them here tonight, but I may have missed them, but it looks like they were satisfied with the outcome. The folks in the city staff that did the really heavy lifting, Iris Lee, Ben Sadiba, and Jim Campbell, as well as Kim Brand and Dave Webb, were very actively involved. And then our landscape architects from David Volt's Design, David Volt and Gary Vasquez. David is here tonight, and at the conclusion of this short presentation, which is an overview, both staff and consultants, landscape architects, will be available to answer any questions that you have. A quick overview of the process, we held four publicly noticed CAP meetings in the fire conference room here at City Hall. We stressed throughout the process that this is a conceptual level planning of detail. And so, while there's a temptation to go deeper into design and detail, we really wanted to stay at something that was more a building block and kind of framework level and make sure that the plan represented the community and the CAP members' desires for the things that were most important about the plan. There is some level of detail in it, but it's, there's a recognition also that as these projects move through more detailed design and budgeting and prioritization, these things can be moved around, but the structure is really there. The meeting formats included presentations, public comment, discussions, and actions. At its November 9th and December 14th CAP meetings, the committee reviewed and ultimately approved three elements, really, that make up the conceptual plan, and I'll break those down for you. And they directed staff to present that outcome to the Neighborhood Revitalization Committee. They asked us to include with that a set of additional recommendations that were relevant to the neighborhood but were perhaps outside of the scope of the conceptual planning concept, and we'll go over those as well. They prioritized the projects and reviewed a preliminary budget that was prepared. At its December 15th meeting, the NRC accepted the recommendations of the CAP, and tonight, of course, recommends the council's consideration or adoption of the conceptual plan. There were a series of design priorities that we spent some time going over at the initial meetings, and I'll try to touch on these as we go through some of the slides that show the different project components. But the recognition that the Santa Ana River entryway at West Coast Highway should be an iconic gateway to the city. The landscape along West Coast Highway should be appropriate to the higher speeds along that stretch. The intersection at Coast Highway in Balboa is a gateway to the neighborhood, and special attention should be paid there. The balancing of the desire to screen some of the activity at the fast food restaurant, the Jack-in-the-Box, at the intersection, balancing that with the visibility needs of the retail site there. And so, we've got a slide that in particular shows how the committee would like, liked us to accomplish that. The greening of Balboa along with improving the pedestrian experience along Balboa Boulevard. And then there are two areas, one along Coast Highway coming off the bridge across Santa Ana River, and then also on the hill up Superior where there are K-rails, and we're really looking to find something that was more visually appealing than that K-rail, but still accomplish the safety requirements along those stretches. And then also, in any changes along Superior, to preserve the views for the property owners above there. There were three coordinated planning areas that make up the concept plan, and we'll go over those individually, West Coast Highway, Balboa Boulevard, and Superior Avenue. And coordinated ultimately, but each dealt with separately to come up with individual characteristics that made up the whole. We'll start with West Coast Highway. This is, this is the extent of the West Coast Highway planning area, and what you'll see along this edge is this is Santa Ana River over here with the bridge. This is what's considered the gateway area. All the way down, the kind of this first stretch goes down to about the tennis courts, the second stretch down to the intersection with Balboa Boulevard, and then the third stretch all the way down to Newport Boulevard. So, it's a little tough to see on here, but at a kind of a macro level, you see the plantings, you'll see the addition of new medians where just K-rail exists in this case, and as you get further down, there's some painted, painted medians that are being described as converted to more landscaped hard medians. The addition of parkway planting along the road to kind of buffer the sidewalk from the road, as well as some parkway plantings at the back of the road. It's a little easier to see in these views, but here, here again is the, I lost my, fortunately I have a backup pointer. How's that for being prepared? So, here's the gateway area, and we've got a detailed slide of what this would look like, but this is really considered the gateway here at the recommendation of one of the CAP members, Paul Watkins. The landscape architects went back and looked at some plantings on the downslope to the Mobile Home Park to provide something more interesting to look at in the foreground. You'll see a series of date palms kind of framing this gateway area and giving it a real Boulevard look coming into the city. Along here, you'll see plantings along the roadside. As you get further down, that starts to alternate with plantings at the back of the sidewalk, as well as the front of the sidewalk. Those are some of the key components. You'll see canopy trees in here in the median, and the conversion of the K-rail to something much more interesting has a lot of landscaping going on here, but then you start to get into this section, and the K-rail actually has been converted to kind of a serpentine wall that allows planting on both sides, kind of alternating with different types of plantings. So, as cars are going down this stretch, they'll see a big block of color alternating with a big block of green, and it was a great solution, the committee felt, to the issue of the K-rail and the safety issue, but also integrating some design into that. Show a couple of photo simulations of the area. This is coming off the bridge. You see the K-rail here. This is the existing condition, what it looks like. You know, it's the Mobile Home Park over here, and then most of these trees are at the back of the walk or in the parks along the stretch. And this is a simulation of what this could look like. These are not by any means final designs. They're really just there to show that these big structural elements can really make a statement when you come into the city off the bridge. You'll see the big fan palms along here, both in the median and in the parkways. And then again, this planting along the edge between the sidewalk and the road really makes a big difference. The sign looks a little out of scale, but the point here was to do something more visible with the sign to make it more apparent that you've come into Newport Beach. So, that's the photo simulation of that gateway. A little further down, some of the median treatment examples. This is the existing, and all of this tall stuff is in the background or in the park or in the parkway on the other side of the wall. And what you have now in the median are these Mediterranean fan palm. I'm saying this stuff like I know what I'm talking about in terms of landscape architecture, but I spent four months in these meetings listening, and so you'll have a chance to get more detail on this, but I'm describing what I've absorbed over the course of the process. But these fan palms kind of low a lot of hardscape material in here, concrete, and then low shrubbery. And if you, if you take a look now at the photo simulation, what you see is all of the hard material, the concrete's been removed. You've got canopy trees in the middle, these large date palms again, and then plantings, again, alternating side to side, and so you get the effect of it as you go by at the higher speeds of Coast Highway there. That's the high-level overview of the Coast Highway section. Talk a little bit about Balboa Boulevard now, including the intersection of Coast Highway and Balboa Boulevard. This is the extent of the planning area. This is the intersection here down to about 34th Street, and then from 34th down to the Mixmaster, that was the scope area for the Balboa Boulevard exercise. In this area up here, there are a lot of median opportunities for planning and existing medians, and through the discussions with the committee and input from the public and Mr. Selich, what the landscape architects did is included the addition of new, smaller medians down here primarily at the half blocks and the alley ends to provide an opportunity to include some trees in the median and really kind of green up this section down here, which is pretty stark. We'll also talk in a minute, and I'll show you this photo simulation of an idea that Councilmember Selich brought forward for Tree Islands. And those are ideas that could be placed in areas where there really isn't room in the parkway for tree planting, but you want to get some greenery down along the edges. In this northern stretches, there is sufficient sidewalk space to put in these parkway trees. And in this concept, what they've got in the areas where there isn't street parking, some green screen between those, which could have vines trailing on them to create kind of a buffer between the sidewalk and the street and improve the experience for pedestrians over here. That's for areas where there isn't on-street parking. In the areas where there is on-street parking, that's, that would prohibit people getting out of their cars and onto the sidewalk, and so what they've done is they've moved the green screens to the back of the walk in this area to kind of get the same effect, but it would be some kind of a light screen with vines trailing on it to green up a lot of those walls that are there that aren't really landscaped at all. There's concrete, there's painted wood, there's stucco, and so it was seen as a way to improve that and fill in the space between these new parkway trees. This is an example of one of the new islands at the alleyway exits. It was done in this way so as not to impede any of the traffic flow that goes on in accessing the streets, but was felt that the alley ends were a good spot to look for something like that, and so you'd see canopy trees and landscaping there as well. There's a couple photo simulations of the Balboa Boulevard. Well, first, let's go to the intersection. There were two areas in the intersection that we wanted to, the committee wanted to look at in more detail, and they were the Jack-in-the-Box site and then also the corner, the south corner. And so, the landscape architects put together specific plans for this. The Jack-in-the-Box building is actually up on a pad quite a ways, and the view that folks really wanted to deal with was the drive-through lane here with the cars stacked up in the drive-through lane. And so, what the landscape architects are suggesting is a wall, a short wall here to give some planting space along with a transparent screen on top of that, which would be planted with some kind of a climbing material, as well as on the corner itself, the placement of these date palms and landscaping around the nose of the corner. The sensitivity to the building and the sign, this is probably the, you know, this tree here is probably the kind of, we're looking at it from the worst possible angle, but any, if you move a couple of degrees off of this, even with this kind of planting here, you're looking from this direction, you're still going to be the signage, see the signage. The concept plan doesn't lock in these locations, and as these projects move through the process, all of these things would be detailed in the design process and the engineering process and the outreach process with the landowners and the business owners and the community. But the idea was, is a way to create something that both respects the retail site but also implements some of the community's vision for how to better screen that. At the corner, at the south corner, another gateway, this is a gateway to the neighborhood, and so what the landscape architects have done is they've continued the theme that was introduced on West Coast Highway with the date palms and the canopy trees, introducing a large landscaped area with a seating wall here, incorporating the sign probably into that seating wall. But again, kind of a grand statement that you're coming into some place and you want to know that you've arrived there and that you're entering there. Back on Balboa Boulevard, up on the left, you'll see kind of the existing, existing medians with the tall palm trees and very low ground cover with a lot of the concrete down here and then these blank walls behind. This rendering shows the introduction of these canopy trees, kind of filling in that middle along with the removal of the hard material and the addition of the landscaping, the ground cover, and the flowering trees. You can also get a little glimpse of some of the greenery that would go in these parkway plantings along the walls in the back there. And then this is the concept I mentioned earlier that Councilmember Selich brought, I think from Seal Beach. Is that, I think these came from Seal Beach, the idea. And the idea with the Tree Islands is that you don't disturb the existing curb work or any of the ADA work. You maintain the flow for the runoff and kind of the ease of cleaning. You set these off from the curb, and you set them in areas that are already no parking areas. And so, you haven't, parking's a huge issue everywhere, particularly down here, and so you haven't impacted parking, but you've, they're kind of found opportunities to introduce some landscaping and greenery without affecting existing capital investments or requiring to undo something or impacting parking in the area. And you can really see the difference here in the view of the existing condition versus what happens when you start to soften that up with the parkway trees and the Tree Islands. Superior Avenue is the last segment that we want to talk about, and one of the big issues on Superior was really, again, the look of the K-rail. And the landscape architects with the input from the committee and the public came up with what looks like a great solution, and it's kind of this terraced curved retaining wall that provides the safety function of the K-rail, but also creates these opportunities for planting. And this steps down the hill, and I'll show you an overhead view that shows kind of the way that they're curved, but again, it steps down the hill. It's consistent with the planting that's gone up north of Ticonderoga on Superior in most of its planting style, and so this was a relatively simple one once they solved the problem of what to do about the K-rail. If you look at it from overhead, you can start to see what the real design looks like. And so, these are these curved walls. They're not just straight planting boxes. They're these curved walls, which will have a really interesting look both coming down and going up the hill, as well as the addition of tree grates in the parkways and these parkway trees to soften it up. And you can really see in the elevations or the sections with the existing view with the K-rail, nothing in the parkways and just kind of these tall trees with something down very low, with the addition of this more sculptural kind of planting element that provides the safety function as well as the parkway trees. One of the considerations that came up was during the CAP meeting was there's a lot of skid marks on these K-rails, and so Dave Webb's suggestion was that we just, we kind of raised this curb up a little bit to absorb most of the impact there before it gets up into the, into the planting or into the structural areas up there. The CAP had some additional recommendations. As I mentioned, these were things that weren't necessarily part of the conceptual planning process but were relevant to the community and to the CAP members, and these are listed here. They're also in the staff report. They wanted the city to continue to pursue the undergrounding of utilities. As the process moves forward through the budgeting and design process, consider the addition of some decorative streetlights. There was a discussion of alternatives to the existing public art in the area and the addition of new public art. We had quite a few discussions about crosswalk improvements and traffic calming, and I wanted to make sure that that concern was passed on. Some maybe reconsidering the frequency of sidewalk steam cleaning in the area. And then going beyond looking just at the general fund for funding opportunities, maybe there are co-funding opportunities, maybe there are some other sources that could help move the projects forward and increase the speed at which they can move forward. And then finally, as all of these plans come together, just to ensure that this plan is compatible with the Lido Village plan. And finally, there was, these preliminary budgets were designed, and there's a lot of information on this chart, but probably the most relevant numbers to look at are, well, actually down here, these are the priorities that the committee felt were important. The order of priority, Balboa Boulevard, then West Coast Highway, then Superior Avenue, and some big blocks here of cost. $1.3 million for the first section of Balboa Boulevard, about $700,000 for the second section, $900,000 for the intersection work, and then about nine, mid 900s for the gateway feature, and then down for the Coast Highway from the gateway feature to the tennis courts, another $900,000 from the tennis courts to Balboa, and then that final stretch from Balboa down to Newport Boulevard, $1.8 million. Superior Avenue, $860,000. The total project's about $8.5 million, and then about $79,000 in incremental maintenance costs if these improvements were all made. And that's the conclusion of the presentation. As I said, the landscape architect, David Volt, is here, right here, to answer any questions along with staff or myself.
Councilman Selich?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'd like to, as Councilman Hill did, thank the Citizens Advisory Panel and all of the people that attended the Citizens Advisory Panel meetings. We had a good turnout at every meeting, had a lot of participation. It's difficult to do landscaping plans because everybody has their favorite trees and their favorite plants. And the process worked really well because I think that all of the participants were able to get their ideas in in a conceptual way and then let the landscape architects go off and do their work. And as we worked our way through the process, I think very logically and sequentially, we worked through all the different types of plant materials and the different alternatives and came up with the schemes that were presented this evening. And I'm very pleased with the work that we've come up with. One of the things that I've had on my list of things that I would like to see accomplished while I was on the City Council was that in this part of Newport Beach, that we would enhance the landscaping, the public landscaping. I believe it's a sound investment of public dollars. A lot of times, it's overlooked and considered superfluous. However, I think it's something that really adds value to the community. And it helps upgrade areas of the city. And it helps keep crime down. As you have nice landscaping, your buildings improve. And as the buildings improve, the crime and other problems seem to go away. So I think it's a worthwhile investment. It's a substantial amount of money, $8.5 million. We're not going to be able to do it all at one time, but one of the recommendations is that we include it, start including it in our capital improvements program. And with that, I would move the recommendation where we approve the plan and then also we direct the staff to work on including it in our capital improvement plan.
I'll second that.
All right, a second. Is there any other comment from Councilman Diggle?
Yes, I think this is an excellent example of how landscaping can really provide a visual framework. It's just really, I think it came out really well.
Councilman Hen?
Yes, you know, I'd like to add my thanks to Councilmember Selich, who, with his background and expertise and his creative bent, has made a significant difference in the outcome of this plan, especially with regard to the Tree Islands and other special kinds of landscaping treatments. And so thank you, Ed, for your guidance and contributions to this program. You know, these revitalization projects, I think, are essential. I think the landscaping projects in particular are because it's my hope and expectation that by the time we're done here with these things, no matter where you enter Newport Beach, when you cross that line, you know you've entered a different and special place. And I think this plan is an excellent example of how that can be brought to fruition here. It's for the benefit of all of the residents of our city to be able to do that. With regard to the next steps, I have a further thought. This isn't exactly a next step for this project, but I think it is important. We have a lot of activity going on now in Lido Marina Village, as well as the proposed designs here for Balboa Boulevard and down in Balboa Village. I would very much like to, and I'll be discussing this at the Neighborhood Revitalization Committee, but as we are able to consider follow-on projects and Citizens Advisory Panels, I think we're going to need to organize one more. And that's one to consider how we extend this landscape guideline from the 22nd Street stopping point of this particular project, at least on down to Balboa Village, to really institute an integrated feeling all the way down the peninsula that's consistent all the way down. And that's more, that's more designs, that's more money, more money well-spent when we can figure out how to work it into the capital improvements plan. So, thanks again, Ed. I'll look forward to how well staff can figure out a way to cut loose some money here. The only other comment that I would make is that I think the committee also did an excellent job prioritizing this work. And I certainly agree that the prioritization was appropriate. And it was prioritized in bite-sized chunks, actually, so that we don't have to worry about chewing off $8.5 million. If we can find a way to chip off a half a million or a million as we go down the road here, we'll get it done over a period of a few years, and then we'll all be exceptionally proud. Thank you.
Any public comment on this item?
Good evening, WR Building. I live within the Balboa Village bid on residential property. I've been there since '65. My concern, and I appreciate the comments of Mr. Councilmember Selich and Hen tonight, I thought, from having attended all of your committee meetings plus all the Balboa Village, that these were not coming back until they were all completed. Now granted, Crota Del Mar hasn't been mentioned here. It's been some items read in the paper. The Village, we had hoped to be done three months ago, but we're now looking at what, May, June possibly, that is there money currently set aside to do these projects? It appears to me from the statement that in the upcoming capital improvement project, that is next year's budget to get started. I thought from the prioritization list that the committee established that that's how these projects would go and that because we're dragging our, we're not dragging our heels, we just have found so many things in Balboa Village to be concerned about that haven't been addressed since 2000, the 2000 plan, of which the city granted, did spend a lot of money. Maybe that should be deducted from us. I hope not. But at the same time, there was no effort by the community to get involved until former Mayor Hen brought up this revitalization, which has really brought a lot of interest and brought a lot of people out and a lot of comments made, and is greatly appreciated. And by the way, you look so much calmer sitting down over there tonight. There isn't as much stress. So it's just, it's one, how much money do we have for the next 10 years? Whether construction costs go up or not, I don't know. Looking at this one here, the 8.5 billion, I think some of those things should, if the money's available now, go ahead and do them, but break them down into smaller projects. It may cost us more, it may not. And the other thing is, I hope the residents of West Newport Beach do like we've pretty much done on the peninsula now, and that is undergrounded all of our utilities except one little section. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is anybody else cold? I'm freezing. No, just me? Okay. Public comment, yes?
It's been a little hot in here, as far as I'm concerned.
Mayor Gardner and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I wanted to underscore what Councilman Hen said. $8.5 million is quite a lot of money. And even if it's done in chunks, it still adds up to $8.5 million. At your last meeting, you were talking about the Lower Bay dredging plan, which came out at $6.8 million. And at least to my mind, that has maybe a more proportionate result than this cosmetic change. But at least in that case, the city was hoping to get by with only having to pay $2.5 million by exploring the other funding sources. And in a case like this, there obviously there might be transportation money or something. So I would like to underscore the, if it comes to the point of funding this, the committee's recommendation to pursue other sources to contribute towards it.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Gardner. My name is George Froter, and I've been a resident on the peninsula here 25 years. Yes, it is a little bit cold in here. That's why I always bring a jacket. So you're going to have to start bringing a heavier jacket and just put it on. Okay? But anyways, when I moved here 25 years ago, I bought a duplex on 35th Street, and there was parking beside my building about a year after that. They stripped all the parking out. And I'm talking about the area specifically between Coast Highway and 32nd Street. They just redone the shopping center out of 32nd Street. It's fantastic. It turned out great. The residents appreciated, and I just think it's a huge success. But from Coast Highway to 32nd Street, that corridor there, it's probably one of the most unattractive corridors, and it's not the residents' fault. And I'm sorry to say, but it's the city's fault because of what has been done there. Before you were all up there, in past years, they bought one residential lot on the inland side, this city did, or whoever. And that's why the block walls from 32nd Street to Coast Highway, they're all exactly the same, because they bought a lot so they could widen the street and expedite the traffic in and out. On the other side of Balboa, between Coast Highway and 32nd Street, we used to have parking beside our buildings. As I mentioned, when I bought mine, there were four spaces that I could park my cars. They're all gone. So we have a wide-open corridor there with block walls, no trees, nothing. So the young people, whomever in a hurry to get to the beach, they stop at Jack and the box, there's a green light at 32nd Street and one stop sign. So they speed as quick as they can. On that stretch of Balboa, we either have two blocks of duplexes you go down, and then some of them, there's four, there's, you know, and plus there's all the residents on Newport Island. And these are all families that want to cross the street and get to the beach or go where they want to go. So I just support this project in particular, and it's one of the ones that costs a bit more, but it has to be done. I'm sure any traffic engineer will tell you, once you put the trees in, the landscaping in, it will have a calming effect on the traffic and just slow it down. And, you know, it wasn't explained, and I had some concerns. The green screening on the side of Balboa between the two trees, that's only about 18 inches tall. It's just some type of, you know, fencing that can be planted there, you know, so it'll just green the area a bit. So it's a good project. All of the residents in the area, most of us did attend the meetings that Councilman Selich did a very good job with. A lot of information got out, and the residents all pretty much supported a lot. So we do realize the cost a bit more, but the area's been neglected for years, so we do hope you'll give some serious consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Thank you, Robert Hawkins, City of Newport Beach. First, as I indicated prior, Mr. Hill's conflict in connection with this whole revitalization thing undercuts this project. Mr. Hill's business and building is within 500 feet of the 22nd Street Balboa exit. So that is part of this project. He participated early on. Once again, the toothpaste is out of the tube and you cannot put it back in. Secondly, we've talked about the fact that there apparently are no direct physical improvements, and yet we're talking about amending our capital improvement plan. Well, that means you're going to have physical improvements, which under sec will require analysis. The staff report talks about no direct or indirect impacts. You've got direct and indirect impacts. That needs to be analyzed. Thank you very much.
I'd just like to reiterate that Councilmember Hill has recused himself. I don't think that impacts your ability to take action on this. You're not rubber stamping this item. You're basically doing your own independent analysis of it. I don't see any issue with you going ahead and moving forward with an approval of this item, if that's what the City Council so chooses.
Is there a SEQA issue?
In regards to SEQA, I don't, I don't believe this is a step that would require the SEQA analysis. Analysis will come later on.
No, thank you. Any other public comment?
All right, we have a motion to approve the West Newport Landscape Revitalization Project and also to get information on getting it on the capital improvement, CIP list.
Am I correct? Can we vote, please?
With Councilmembers Hill and Rosansky recusing themselves, the motion carries 5-0.
And our next item is the Santa Ana Heights Bristol Street South Landscape Revitalization Project.
Yes, Mayor Gardner, Dennis Stone.
Madam Mayor, there was one additional recommendation that was in the staff report. I don't know if the council wishes to proceed with that one in terms of providing direction to staff on the additional CAP recommendations. They're listed on page four of the staff report.
Yeah, I think I overlooked that. That was actually the...
Re-refusal.
I would, I would move the, it was the second item under the recommendations, that we provide direction to the staff on the supplemental Citizen Advisory Panel recommendations and that the staff investigate those recommendations and report back to council.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Any public comment on that? All right, please vote.
With Councilmembers Hill and Rosansky still recusing themselves, the motion carries 5-0.
All right, now to the Santa Ana Heights Bristol Street South.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gardner. Again, our consultant, Dennis Stone, will provide an overview of this revitalization project.
Thank you, Kim. Madam Mayor, members of the council. A real similar presentation, although shorter. The project area for the Santa Ana Heights landscaping project was Bristol Street southbound from Irvine down to Jamboree. Our city council liaison was then-Mayor Mike Hen, very active member. We had two committee members, Tim Stokes and Sarah Wilkinson, same city staff, doing the heavy lifting, Iris, Ben, and Jim. And our landscape architect on this project was Harry Kobzew, who's done a lot of work around the city of Newport Beach. Similar process, we held two public CAP meetings in this case, and after the conclusion of the second meeting, one of the CAP members felt that there was enough direction given, and that his recommendation was that the committee conclude its work and ask staff to complete the planning and bring it forward to the NRC, which we did. The format was the same, presentation's public comment discussion. We brought the presentation initially to the NRC meeting on November 10th and then did some enhanced graphics work and brought it back again on December 15th. The committee again included a list of additional recommendations and a preliminary budget. In this case, there's only one budget item. And then the NRC accepted those recommendations and recommends again the same action tonight of the City Council. The design priorities for the Santa Ana Heights area, again, it's a high-visibility gateway to Newport Beach. The residents and the committee members felt that there was a lot of recent work done around landscaping and hardscaping in the area and building design with fire station in the park. And they wanted to incorporate elements that were already used and that were already part of the vernacular that the citizens had already bought into in the community. So that was an important element. And then they suggested utilizing phasing and pocket improvements for both sides of Bristol. This is one I don't think we got, we completed, we didn't get there. Most of the work is going to happen on the toll roadside of the, the southbound side of Bristol. And it's all concluded in one phase essentially, but it probably could be broken down as the project moves forward if it needed to be more granular than that. You all know what the existing conditions are, dirt and chain-link fence basically along that stretch and no real visible gateway to the city. And so what we're going to look at are just some quick photo simulations that incorporate the elements from the plan. On the bottom, you kind of see the existing stretch, and at the top, what you're seeing is an enhanced view that would have signage, the city sign welcoming people into the city. In the foreground, low plantings, that yellow in the background is actually screening the chain-link fence along there, and then the existing trees providing the backdrop for that. And again, this is a pretty high-speed segment, and so these are big blocks of color and planting, nothing too fancy or detailed along there. The second view, this comes out of Bay View Circle. The bottom view is just, you see kind of straight across under the horizon, the buildings across the toll road. But this was an opportunity to provide some kind of a focal point, and so you'll see the canopy trees with, again, the screening of the chain-link fence in the background and then these bollard elements that do reflect some of the existing work that's been done around the area in Santa Ana Heights, kind of that more rustic feel. The original concept was kind of a split-rail fence, but the bollards really kind of make the statement without having to fill in the wood necessarily in between them. And this is another view that gives you a little bit better perspective on how those might look coming down, as you see them, as you're traveling down the road. And again, the contrast with what's existing with something that's a fairly simple and elegant kind of high-speed... elegant kind of high-speed plan is pretty dramatic. Part of what happens as well with these canopy trees or these parkway trees is you start to screen some of the overhead utilities, and in this area, those high tension wires up above are not likely to be subject to any undergrounding, and so the idea was to try to screen them as much as possible with the landscaping. The additional recommendations included some stepped up, or at least consideration of the code enforcement that's in place, primarily in terms of signage along the other side of the street along there, considered some unsightly areas. Considering hardscape elements that we're using here might be implemented in the North Bristol Plan, that's already quite much further along, but they didn't want to hold up the implementation of that plan either. So if it was something that could be incorporated simply to kind of integrate these designs, that was their suggestion. Also, the consideration of applying this kind of a plan or these guidelines to Bristol west of Irvine Avenue, even though that's not city jurisdiction, it kind of feels like you're coming into Newport Beach, and they thought that this might be useful to try to coordinate with the other agencies. And then as redevelopment, private properties moves forward in the future, to consider this guideline as well as what's already in the specific plan for redevelopment of those properties to help influence the design of the landscaping for those properties. The completion of the design for this project is estimated to cost about $28,000. The construction is about a half a million dollars, and the incremental maintenance is just over $20,000. And there's just under three quarters of a mile of linear feet in this project itself. And that is the brief presentation on Santa Ana Heights.
It seems like a bargain.
And our landscape architect, Harry Kobzewski, is here as well.
Councilman Hen.
Yeah, thanks to you, Dennis, and to the architect, as well as our cap members for their work and contributions on this project. This is a small project by comparison to some of the others that we have seen, but I think still very important. It complements what's already been organized and put forth by Councilmember Daigle regarding the Bristol North patch that I don't know if it looked as bad as Bristol South, but it didn't look very good. I certainly wouldn't want to put up a sign, "Welcome to Newport Beach," on that dirt that's currently existing there. And so this will be, again, a good opportunity to really demonstrate how Newport is different and special with how it looks when you cross that line. I'd like to drop back for a moment to a comment that was made in public comments on a prior agenda item, and that has to do with a concern that moving forward with these projects as they come up and are maturing for council consideration might somehow leave behind funding and prosecution of other projects, the Balboa Village Visioning and the Corona Del Mar Gateway. In the case of Balboa Village Visioning, I don't anticipate, at least at this juncture, for there to be a substantial amount of public funding and hardscape coming out of those recommendations, requiring a lot of capital improvements money like these projects, especially the West Newport Project. The Balboa Visioning Project is more a matter of organizing our design approach, our expectations over time, so that as private development occurs in that area, it can occur in a way that we'll all be happy with and consistent with our desires for the area. And in addition to that, Balboa Village actually through the parking revenues and parking revenue and parking governance will be an important part of that visioning project and the recommendations. Balboa Village has an opportunity through its available funding from parking revenues in that area to self-finance perhaps significant projects and improvements associated with that visioning project. So I'm not worried at this point that Balboa Village is losing ground because others are advancing. And I think it's important that these others advance as and when they can in the project. So with that, I would like to offer a motion to approve the design guidelines as presented, as well as the direction to staff in the supplemental cap recommendations on page three of the report.
Yeah, and I think the supplemental is key, because I was noticing that the, one of them is increasing code enforcement, some of the signage up there. So I think that would be a very good thing to do. You know, with regards to financing these projects, the city has over $90 million in reserves and connected to our general fund, and then there's other types of reserves with wastewater and so on. I don't know what the optimal level of reserves is for a city. I'm sure there's different opinions. But it seems to me, you know, the reason that people, that we're collecting funding is that we turn around, we either provide a service or we provide a capital improvement. So, you know, why are we not releasing the necessary funds and really depriving ourselves of quality infrastructure at these gateway locations? I mean, I would put that question out there. And I do have a question on Bristol North. Do you know when the bid award will come to the city council on that?
I don't opt in, I believe it's in the next couple of months. We're expecting that. We did get the E-76 approved by council, and we are out advertising that project. So my guess is, I think I remember it's February, if I gave you the date right, it might be early March.
Okay.
Bid opening date is on January 19.
Okay, and then it was a 30-day process or for bids, taking bids?
Opening bids, so we're already advertising the contract already, so we'll be bringing it to council thereafter.
Do you both want to identify yourselves?
You're opening the bids on January.
Oh, I see. Not an open-up bid. Okay, I got it. I got it. Thank you.
Do you want to identify yourselves?
Dave Webb and Iris Lee.
Okay. And then what is, what do we budget, what do we project, like 250,000 for North?
Yeah, I believe it's in the 300,000. Remember, that was an ICET grant, too. We applied for federal money to do the landscaping. That is an option, too. I was gonna mention on some of these landscape projects, maybe we do some designs and look for opportunities to get additional grant funds.
And do we know when the, sort of, the cycles begin, whether it's state or federal?
It's kind of hit and miss. It depends what kind of money's released to the feds. It comes through OCTA and Caltrans. Typically, you see one about every two years.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have a comment? Okay, okay. Yes. Anything else? All right, public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. The motion is to approve the Santa Ana Heights Bristol Street South Landscape Revitalization Project and also to include the cap recommendations. Is that correct? All right, please vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, number 16 is the appointments. We will make the annual appointments to our various committees.
Madam Clerk.
Due to the recent Fair Political Practices Commission interpretation, any person nominated to a committee that has a stipend of $250 or more a year should not participate in the appointment process. Therefore, for this agenda item, there's a total of seven votes that will be taken, so it will be recommendations A through G.
Have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All right, good. Is there any comment from the?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Any public comment?
Mayor Gardner and members of the council had four brief comments on this agenda item. Number one, looking at page two and three of the staff report, I see underlined four citizen appointees who are being reappointed to committees at the mayor's recommendation and being approved by the city council. I may have missed it, but I'm not aware of those openings ever having been noticed to the public so that other people who might be interested in those positions had an opportunity to apply for them and be considered for appointment, and I hope in future years that they will be advertised. Comment number two, as I see a number of committees here that says ad hoc and they negotiate, the public never sees quite what they're doing. But the one I wanted to call attention to particularly is on page three, the Building Ad hoc Committee, which I believe, from what I've heard at other council meetings, is meeting to oversee the civic center construction, and it sounds like they're doing very interesting things, and it sounds like they're making decisions on behalf of the city council without those decisions coming back for your approval. So I think it would be in the public interest for the public to know when they're meeting and making decisions and being able to know what's going on there. Comment three, sort of along the same lines as on the fourth page, there's something called the Santa Ana River Crossing Study Policy Advisory Committee. Those of you who've been following the news in the last week or two know that the 19th Street Bridge has raised quite a ruckus, and I think it would be helpful for the public here, if it's possible, to clarify who else besides our appointee is on that committee and where the public can find the notices of their meetings. And my fourth and final point is, as the clerk read out, you're gonna be doing this thing with the seven recusals tonight of people who earn a stipend apparently of more than $250 as a benefit for being appointed to these committees, and as those occur, it seems to me it would be helpful for the public if it could be announced exactly, approximately how much money they are getting for serving on these various committees. I believe that's publicly available at the state controller's office. Their website has a tab called Public Services, and in principle, all these positions are maybe there, maybe not. It's very hard for the public to find that information, and it would be useful if it could be announced if the city staff actually knows what those amounts are. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Please vote on those first appointments.
I would move the, will you have a motion already?
Yes.
Could you please reclarify how far you're going down the voting list?
Oh, all right. We're going down to the Association of Orange County Cities, not including that.
Recommendation A, which would be on agenda pages five.
To the midpoint of page five.
All right, we vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Now we are going to approve, hopefully, the nominations of the Association of Orange County Cities. We have two recusals here.
I'm not aware that that has a stipend.
Well, this is.
Order is three. I know, I've never gotten a check.
Well, the reason for pulling this aside is possibly receiving a stipend is due to the Parks Commission or any other commission appointments being appointed through the city selection committee, which is selected through the Association of Orange County Cities. So kind of by three degrees of separation, just to ensure that there's no complications in the stipend, in order to be cautious and make sure all points are covered.
I'm happy to recuse myself. And for the record, the Parks Commission gets $75 a meeting, two meetings, no more than two meetings a month. And I think it's the city selection committee that makes that vote, not us, but so be it.
Do I have a?
Councilmember Curry and, oops, Mayor and Councilmember Hen.
Do I have a motion to approve those nominations?
Make the motion to approve.
Have a second?
So moved.
Is there public comment? Seeing none, please vote.
With councilmembers, well, Councilmember Hen and Mayor Protam Curry recusing themselves, the motion carries 5-0.
All right, on this next one, I will be leaving.
So Mayor Protam Curry will run the nominations.
Okay. On the table are Recommendations C, which relate to the Orange County Council of Governments. Councilmember Daigle is proposed as the primary member with Mayor Gardner as the alternate. Any comments?
I would move the item. Second.
Seeing no public comments, please vote.
With Mayor Gardner and Councilmember Daigle recusing themselves, the motion carries 5-0. I may return.
We are now.
On Recommendation D, Mayor.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the appointments to the Orange County Sanitation District?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
And duly noted that Councilmembers Rozansky and Daigle did recuse themselves.
Yes. Is there, is there any public comment? Please vote.
With the recusals of Rozansky and Daigle, the motion carries 5-0.
All right. Let.
Councilmember Rozansky can return.
Steve, no, he can come back. All right. Yeah, uh-huh. Now, I entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Councilmember Daigle to the Orange County Vector Control District Board of Trustees.
So moved. Second.
Is there any public comment? Please vote.
With Councilmember Daigle recusing herself, the motion carries 6-0.
We are now proceeding to the San Joaquin Hills TCA. Did I miss one?
That's next.
That's next. It's alphabetical. We're at San Juan Hills Transportation Quarter.
Yeah, the word eight. I'm following my script. I have a motion to approve Councilmember Hill and Mayor Protam Curry to the San Joaquin Hills Transportation Quarter.
So moved. Second.
Is there any public comment?
Where's Leslie?
Oh, she could've come back for this. Please vote.